All right, call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. I state that the notice for the regular city council meeting was duly posted. We do have a quorum of city council. Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have our pledge led by Aubrey Nettles, Executive Director of Economic Development.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
See the flag. Go to the next slide. Go to the next slide, we may have a flag on the next slide. That's okay. There it is. There it is.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is presentation and recognition. Item three is presentation of a Texas Department of Transportation signed to Carmen Pete Turner, the first African-American female tax assessor-collector off Fort Bend County. So it would be myself and Councilmember Ashandra Edwards.
Have the city council seen it yet? Let's turn it around for them first. Hey.
All right.
So I just have a few words to say real quick. I see our State Rep Ron Reynolds is in the audience. So when Carmen got elected, so she was the first African-American person to be elected to that office. So she had called me, we had a sign similar to this on 90 and Texas Parkway. So she had called in as well as State Representative Ron Reynolds as well, said, hey, how can we get that sign changed because it's still said the former person's. And we had went to our Public Works, our Shashi, where's Shashi? He's the one that did it, Carmen, right here. Stand up, Shashi. There he is. So Shashi Kumar went and said, we'll take care of that and took care of the one on one side. And then there's another one on the opposite side, which Councilmember Edwards had reached out to us and said that she needed us to see if we can make that change. And I know that we're making that. So today's a proud day to have this. And honestly, Carmen, this is so big. We're gonna, I hope. But hey, we stand tall behind you. But anyway, I'm gonna pass the mic to Councilmember Edwards and then for you to say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's very important for us to have partnerships with our elected officials across the county. And this right here is an epitome of us working together. Also, I want to thank Shashi for, you know, following up and making sure that this was actually able to come into fruition. It's Black History Month and it's my duty and honor to my friend Carmen Turner and recognize her as the first African-American tax assessor of Fort Bend County. Let's give her a hand of applause. I thank you for your service. I thank you for what you've done for the county so far and I look forward to continuing to serve along the side of you. Have any words?
Oh, my gosh. I mean, first of all, I want to thank the city council members, especially you. I remember when I first, all the city council members who helped out get this done. I called the mayor, when I talked to the mayor, he told me out his own mouth, he said, let me tell you something, I'll take every sign down if your name can't go up there. And you made it happen for me. And I was surprised to hear that because I kept, we kept calling, my team kept calling Tex Doc and they kept giving us all kinds of excuses. And then you stepped up and did your job. You put one side up and then I called Ashonda, that calls me every morning, six o'clock in the morning, and she made sure, the two of them made sure it happened. But I have a lot of family members out there right now. I have classmates that I went to Lamar High School with out here. I have Eric Presley, Eric Presley who actually taught me how to get up here and talk and I'm doing a horrible job right now, Eric, but it's all right because I used to be shy and now I'm talking. I want to say thank you to everybody who helped us get this done. This is not for me. This is for the people of Fort Bend County, Missouri City. It means a lot to them. They kept calling me, asking me when we was gonna get this sign changed. I had no idea y'all was gonna do it. I thought we was gonna just take it down and be through with it and I would've been happy with that. But I work hard for the people of Missouri City and I try to do the same thing that you guys do. And y'all do a great job here in Missouri City to make sure this happens. This is nowhere else but in Missouri City. My sign, and it's a pleasure today to make sure, to see this sign go up. I have Line Barker here with me today and let me tell you something, this tax season, I don't know if y'all know, if y'all got y'all rates and everything done, it was because he gave me employees this year to get it done. But thank everybody and my team is here. Some of the employees that work at my office are here. Oh, yeah, a couple of them are here that I expect here, but all these people in this room, is our city council meetings normally this big? Oh, my God. Okay, well, I need to come to y'all's city council meetings. But I want to say thank you to everybody who helped get this done, but this is not for me. This is for the people who voted for me, who came out and make sure this happened. And I'll make sure I treat the county like it needs to be treated. Thank you, guys, over and over again.
Now, I can tell you that last end of December, I had the opportunity to come to the office to renew my sticker and I can tell you, I was very proud to see your name, not only your name, the quality of service the staff did without even knowing who I was, taking care of not just me, but every single person that waited there, promptness and with respect. And that says a lot about what you have done. Thank you so much. And now, before we close, I want to ask the city council members to join us up here to take a picture. And then where's the State Rep? I know he's here. I want him to come up as well. And then your family and your coworkers, your employees, everyone can come up and take a picture. This is your moment. First, we're gonna go ahead and take a picture with the city council.
One of my friends is not here today, Eric Fagan. We normally try to do everything together because I was the first black tax assessor-collector and he was the first sheriff. The sheriff, the last sheriff that was 151 years ago, was a black man. He was a sheriff and he was a tax assessor-collector. Eric Fagan is not here today, but his wife came in his place and everywhere we go, we always are put together because of that reason. So I want to say thank you to Eric and thank his wife for coming out today.
Yes, you're gonna have plenty of time to take pictures. I just want to give an opportunity to say something for State Representative.
Mayor, I want to thank you for your leadership because if you didn't get this done, she was gonna beat both of us up. I mean, she threatened, y'all don't even know, this woman, don't be fooled by that smile. She was like, my sign ain't up, the other lady's her sign, she ain't even there no more. Y'all should've heard, y'all know how Carmen is, right? But I want to, I kept, hey, Mayor, you gotta get it done, you gotta get it done. So I want to thank the mayor and the city council members for really making this happen. And I couldn't think of a better opportunity than doing Black History Month, Carmen. So the timing was right, okay? They did it in God's time because they wanted this to be a history-making moment that all the citizens could share in. And we are so proud of you and we know that this is a great opportunity to highlight many of our pioneers in this city, like you and like you mentioned, for Sheriff Fagan and so many others. And it was special, Mayor, Saturday, seeing that old relic of a Confederate past come down. This city is really breaking barriers and I really want to thank the citizens for being so engaged and really electing people that care about our diversity and really care about this community. And I don't think any other city is as special as Missouri City. I know I may be a little biased, but as a resident, but you can't find another city with this kind of diversity, with this kind of leadership. And I just want to thank everyone, all the citizens, for being engaged and really electing people that reflect our great diversity. So congratulations, Carmen. May God continue to bless you and shine upon you. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Now, we'll have your family, your friends, your close relatives, colleagues coming up and take a picture. Where is city council's gonna step away from holding this? You got it? Come on up. Whoever wants to take a picture, come on up. You guys can come up.
Yeah.
Shashi. We're putting this up.
Look, Mary. It's okay, I'm glad you made it. I'm glad you made it.
We'll be done before. Shelly got said it.
Oh, wow. Okay. Okay, okay.
All right, if you're staying for the meeting, you're more than welcome, but otherwise, I All right, thank you. Okay, item number, we're gonna go to item number four, our public comments.
Well, Happy New Year, Missouri City Council. The Harris County section of Missouri City had their property taxes increased by at least 7% this year. What are we gonna get for it? How did you ever come up with that tax rate where certain parts of the city would be paying less taxes than other parts of the city? Why does the Harris County section of Missouri City have to pay more percentage in property taxes this year? We get very little services. We still don't have a bridge in Vaughn Meadow. We still don't have a decent senior exemption, which has been set at $15,000 since the 1980s. When is this council gonna act on this? I've already figured you certainly don't give a crap about a bridge, but at least you need to do something with the senior exemption, especially since the Harris County section is probably generating a lot of tax revenue from all these warehouses you shove in our area and you take that money and invest it in a golf course. So it's about time that this council think about this senior property tax exemption in Missouri City. It hasn't changed since the 1980s. And being a senior citizen, I would be paying no Missouri City property taxes because Houston exempts the first $220,000 of revaluation for its tax purposes. So reconsider that. We're already subsidizing other parts of Missouri City. Give us some attention here in the Harris County section. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Watson. Most of you know me from the Citizens Bond Commission and as part of the Moving Forward PAC, remember? The reason why I'm here today is to, in December, we talked about getting a true-up on the diverse providers, business versity, MWBE, providers on the bond issue. I haven't heard anything, I've heard one, my Councilman Emery did let me know about a lawyer, but I haven't heard anything on the engineering firms, all the other stuff. So that's very important to me. So I'll just say, we can wait, Alana, until the March meeting, but I will be again, because I get questions every day from citizens in Quail Valley and other parts of Missouri City on this topic. Secondly, interest rates are moving. The Fed Chairman has said he's gonna do three to five increases this year, just in the meeting, the two-day meeting that just passed last week. I really would like to know the plans for the issues. What are our plans? Because we're AA-rated city. There are AAA-rated cities in Fort Bend County. The spread is gonna get wider between the bonds. As the long bond moves out farther, follow-along issues, even between AAA and AA, AA+ get larger. So I'd like to know, or the citizens would like to know, what's the plan? All right? Because I just don't want us to be thinking, having one number in our head that we had this summer and fall, and then the reality is different. So maybe for March, can we have this on the agenda sometime or the latest April? But March will be very helpful. All right? And I'm very pleased that Sister Carmen, that was present with us. And also very pleased about the Confederate sign that came down. That's something that I was on the council meetings last fall on, meant a lot to me because history means a lot to me and I'm from Alabama originally, so I know Dixie when I see it. And it was very nice to see that falling down. We have a lot more to do, but at least that was the beginning. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Watson, before you leave the mic, can you repeat what that, you said the diverse in what bond?
The bonds. The, what will happen now that the Federal Reserve Chairman has indicated they're gonna do three to five rate increases this year. Right now, we're at zero. Okay? But now that they've said we're gonna do three to five, normally they're quarter basis points, 25 basis points in each increase, but it could be 50. So what happens is, when you start getting disparity in the 10, 30, even five-year bond, there will be a differential in the cost of issuance for the AA category versus the AAA. Right now in Fort Bend County, there's several communities that are AAA. We're AA, AA+, bitch, I just looked at it a little while ago. So anyway, I'm just nervous that we farting around, we're gonna lose out on cash.
Thank you.
All right?
Anymore? That's it? Okay. Item number five, our staff reports. There are no staff reports on this agenda. Item number six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
It's been a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boni, second by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, seven-zero. Item number seven are public hearing and related actions. There are no public hearing and related actions on this agenda. Number eight are appointments. There are no appointments on this agenda. Item number nine, authorizations. Nine A, consider authorizing the city manager to allocate and expand American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, based on the presented spending plan for eligible needed projects. It was a presentation by Shashi Kumar.
Here in council, again, we worked up this item with you at the special meeting. We presented the projects that we plan to spend on as part of the 6.9 million approximately that we're getting as part of the ARPA funds. Again, those projects were presented to you at the special meeting. The item for you tonight is to authorize expending funds on those particular projects that was presented to you at the special meeting. It's also included in your agenda packet. With that, me and my team are here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Klausner, second by Mayor Pro Tem Boni. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, seven-zero. Thank you, Shashi. Item nine B, consider authorizing the Parkland dedication proposal for the Madera, Missouri City. There's a presentation by Mason Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the Parkland dedication for Madera, Missouri City. It's Zoned MF2, multifamily residential. It's located south of Trammell, Fresno, east of Fort Bend Tollway, west of Hurricane Lane, north of Highway 6. This is on a 15-acre tract of land with a proposed 300 units, dwelling units. The proposal involves cash in lieu of, in the amount of $420,000 for the site. The Parks and Recreation Board heard this item at the January 6 meeting and forwarded a positive recommendation. They sent that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which heard this item at the January 12, 2022, meeting and forwarded this item with a positive recommendation as well. And that is all.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Councilmember, was that you seconded?
Seconded, yes.
It's been a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boni, second by Council- It's been a motion by Mayor Protem Boni, second by Councilmember Riley, is there a discussion?
What park zone is that located?
This is in Park Zone Number 10.
10? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
There are no other discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, 7-0, thank you. Item 9C, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase and installation of sports field lighting at Hunter's Glen Park. We have a presentation by Jason Mangum, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor and council, this item is coming to you, it's approved in the current year budget, operations budget. We have currently two sports fields at Hunter's Glen Park. We, high-demand park, we have a lot of people looking to use those fields, especially in the evening times, when people are out of school and out of work. We propose to light the second field with sports field lighting, and we are bringing it to you for your approval.
Okay, thank you, is there a motion?
Second.
It's been a motion by Councilmember Maroos, second by Mayor Protem Boni, is there a discussion?
Man, I just wanna say in council that, you know, I'm just happy to see this happening, there's a lot of things that are often said that this side of Missouri City doesn't get adequate funding, equitable funding, and this is just yet another example of how we're investing in our assets on this side of town with Hunter's Glen Park. I'm also excited about what we've already talked about in the past as well with the concrete trail that's forthcoming, that's coming by way of the funds that will be coming through our CDAC Committee, but, you know, we're doing a lot to invest in this area, and it's always positive when you can highlight those things that are happening on this side and not having them glossed over by, you know, negativity or people who may not be paying attention to what's going on. So thank you, Jason and your team.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, Jason. Item number 10 are ordinances.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas amending the general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, transferring various appropriations among accounts, appropriating supplemental revenue to various fund accounts, amending the authorized staffing for fiscal year 2022, authorizing the appropriate city officials to take steps necessary to accomplish such transfers, making certain findings, and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
Okay, thank you. I noticed that there's a, there is a presentation. I know.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I thought I had a little more time, they must have went quick with their presentations, so sorry for being a little late.
We're moving fast today.
Yes, and I'll try to move fast also, or be available for questions. So this is the budget amendment for fiscal year 2022. I wanted to go over all of the different changes in your packet, you have this presentation, you also have the Exhibit A, which outlines all of the account numbers and how things are moving. And so we'll just go through the information and how it impacts the different fund types. In the general fund, which includes the general fund and some of our, we call them sub-funds, disaster fleet and equipment replacement, we have an increase in revenue of $40,749, and this is revenue that we're gonna receive from enterprise leasing. We ran a pilot project, or we're in the midst of a pilot project, where we're leasing nine vehicles to determine if the program could actually pay for itself. And so we paid approximately $50,000 last year for leasing nine vehicles. Now we're scheduled to sell these vehicles, we've only had them for a year, and we're basically gonna be making back the money that we paid last year from the sale, based on selling that market value. And so we are going to be increasing revenue this year, $40,749, in order to increase the expense to pay for this year's leases. So it's basically one year free. We already talked this evening about the additional patrol officers, so in the budget amendment, we do have an increase in salary benefits and materials and other costs associated with two new patrol officers with motorcycles, that's included in the general fund. We're increasing expenditures in the area of other miscellaneous to pay for two settlement agreements that were recently approved by city council. You see, the expense for the lease payment, so it's basically net zero, one year free. We're also going to be increasing the budget within our IT replacement fund, $200,000, and it's just a contingency, just in case there's any emergency purchases that are necessary so that we don't have to come back to council in order to spend the funds, it'll already be appropriated, because these funds aren't currently appropriated. We also have $60,000 that's gonna be transferred into our facilities project fund for renovation work that is being done at the community center and city hall. And so the net impact to the general fund is $534,732. We do have an ending fund balance that's estimated currently in the budget at 25.7. We anticipate it being higher than that after we close out this year's audit. Our fund balance will be over the requested threshold, or the policy threshold of 30%.
Good, thank you.
I have.
You have more?
Yeah, a few others, I'll try to go fast, okay? So you do have these in your packet, so I'll just tell you the total dollar amounts, so for the police department with the positions and the equipment, it's $237,257. Again, IT replacement is $200,000. The community center, which includes flooring, and the city hall executive offices flooring, that's $60,000. And then we also have changes for the American Rescue Plan Act, which you also heard at the special revenue, I mean, I'm sorry, not special revenue, this is special revenue fund, at the special council meeting, and this is appropriating the $6.9 million that we received in this program. For capital projects, this is just the other side of the $60,000, we also have $900,000 from Metro, has matching funds to the Fort Bend County Mobility Project for reconstruction of Missouri City Drive. And the utility funds, we're separating one fund into two to make sure that our certificates of obligation and the proceeds for the utilities, beans, Steep Bank, Flat Bank, and Mustang Bayou, that they are, the projects are accounted for separately. So there's no impact when it comes to total utilities, it's just adding another fund and shifting the budget around. We're actually recording all of the expenditures in this manner now. And that ends my presentation, I'm available, and the staff is also available if you have any questions about the specific projects.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion.
I heard Councilmember Klausner with the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Heard Councilmember Emery, is there a discussion?
Mayor and council, just wanted to inform you all that this, as well as a few of the items that we'll be voting on a little later, came before the Finance and Services Committee, and we forward a positive recommendation.
All right, there's been a motion by Councilmember Klausner, second by Councilmember Emery. There are no other discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, 7-0. Item 10B has been pulled. Item number 11 are resolutions.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, approving the submission of a program year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor through the Houston-Galveston Area Council to fund the purchase of fingerprinting equipment for the Missouri City Police Department, and containing other provisions related thereto.
Thank you, we have Rachel Murray from the Recognition and Compliance Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are requesting to apply for the HDAC grant, Houston-Galveston Area Council, in the amount just over of $20,000. We're requesting an APIS machine for our jail to replace our current outdated technology. We are requesting a printer to go along with that, and three mobile fingerprint scanners for the officers in the field. There is no match with this.
Okay. All right, so is there a motion?
Make a motion that we proceed.
Okay, there's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, is there a second at the? Councilmember Klausner. Is there a discussion? All right.
I'd just like to add a comment real quick, I had an opportunity to visit the jail. One, I have, it's a pro and con thing, it's a little outdated, unfortunately, under the circumstances. But the one thing that I did notice, that the needs that you're talking about, you talk about those things, and so I'm glad that you're bringing it before council. The other thing is I wanted to just say how clean it was, I looked in the refrigerator, the microwave, everywhere. It was nice, it was clean, it smelled clean as well, and I think that's important to maintain in spite of, you know, criminal behavior or whatnot, we still have respect for human decency and, you know, the type of accommodations that we're providing, so thank you.
Thank you, I'll pass that along.
Thank you. All right, there's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, second by Councilmember Klausner. There are no other discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. The motion carries, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you so much.
Item 11B.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting redistricting criteria for use in the 2022 redistricting process, and providing an effective date. As you all will recall, Mr. Heath presented on the proposed redistricting criteria, that was included in his presentation. They include providing districts that have identifiable geographic boundaries, having, avoiding splitting traditional neighborhoods within each district, providing for whole voting precincts within each district, providing existing council member, preserving existing council member districts, ensuring that each district has an equal amount of people by population, as well as including contiguous territory. Another item is preserving incumbent constituencies, and, as he mentioned, avoiding racial gerrymandering. Additionally, the proposed district should not fragment a geographically compact minority. Again, this criteria will be used not only by the consultant, but by anyone who's proposing a proposed plan for you all to consider.
Okay, thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Heard motion by Mayor Protem Boni, second by Councilmember Maroos, is there a discussion? Not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, 7-0, thank you, Joyce. Item number C.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, adopting rules governing the investment of funds of the City of Missouri City, designating the Deputy Assistant City Manager Financial Services Department Director and Assistant Director of Financial Services Department to be responsible for the investment of City of Missouri City funds, and providing for repeal.
We have Elena Portis, Director of Financial Services.
Okay, so we are requesting three different changes to our investment policy. Typically, we come to council in June on an annual basis to approve the investment policy, because it is required to be approved annually by the Public Funds Investment Act. But we're going to be doing this early this year because we have some changes that need to be made immediately. We are adding the Assistant Director of Finance to the policy as an investment officer. And we're also changing the name from Assistant City Manager to Deputy Assistant City Manager as an investment officer. And then, although there weren't any changes to the Public Funds Investment Act in the last session, we are updating the policy to only require eight hours of additional training once someone takes the initial 10 hours, once they are, once they are appointed as an investment officer. So those are the three changes that we have in the policy.
Thank you, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I heard Councilmember Klausner, and is that yours? Councilmember Maroos with the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, 7-0, thank you, Lynn. Item number D.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, establishing guidelines for persons submitting comments and redistricting proposals and providing an effective date. As mentioned, Mr. Heath also brought up the fact that the council might want to receive comments from the public. This resolution sets forth standard procedures that would need to be applied to all people who are submitting comments. The first item is that all comments would need to be submitted in writing, providing you all with documentation of what the feedback and comments are. Additionally, providing total population and voting age for every submission. Redistricting the entire city, there's no way for the council to change one part or one district without changing other parts, because again, the goal is to provide for equal representation between districts. The next item is to conform to the criteria that you've just established by resolution. Another is that each person has to identify themselves by name, address, and provide a phone number and email address so that they can be contacted if there are questions regarding their written comments. The seventh item is to provide for comments to be submitted to the city by 4:00 PM on March, it states the 14th. I believe that we could extend that to the 28th, so if someone would like to make that, or add that to the motion to change that date, I'd appreciate that so that the public can have additional time to submit comments.
Yeah, thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
The motion by Councilmember Riley, is there a second?
Did you need us to?
Additional?
Add that additional component before voting?
If you don't mind to add that date, instead of, it states the 14th in the document, that's before you, if you could just add to your motion to make item seven a March 28th instead of March 14th, that would be acceptable, thank you.
March 28th versus March 7th?
March 28th.
Not March 7th, March 20, right?
28th.
28.
28.
28.
So there's been a motion by Councilmember Riley, is there a second?
No second.
Okay, so there's been a second by Mayor Protem Boni as well, so is there a discussion?
E Joyce, with the resolution, you may mention that the way that they make public comments would have to be their name, their address, their phone number, their email. Is that during public comments, when they're here physically in person, or is that just when they're submitting them in writing?
So that would be at all times, all times, so even if a comment is submitted orally, we would still ask that they follow up and submit it in writing. The IT department has created a dedicated email address for redistricting comments, that we would ask that they submit them to that email address so that we have a record of all of those comments, even though they might make an oral comment.
So even if they're making an oral comment, are they gonna be required to list their phone number and their email address on record while verbally?
So they wouldn't have to do that orally, but they would have to do that in, to the dedicated email to the city.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that that's clear, I don't, that we don't want people having to announce their phone numbers and email addresses
Oh, no, no, no.
over an oral comment, okay?
Thank you for that clarification.
Hey Joyce, where will the citizens that want to make comments find the detail? As far as what's expected, dates, times?
So once you all approve this resolution, I'll work with the Communications Department to develop some sort of document that will provide detailed information about how the public can submit comments. As you all know, the vendor will return on the 21st to provide that base map, so that will be the key point on which people will make comments. But once that's kicked off, we will have some sort of, almost like a pamphlet or electronic type of pamphlet that we can distribute to people.
And E Joyce, will this particular item, for them to make verbal comments, will this be a separate public hearing? Or will this be at our next meeting?
So the proposed timeline includes an electronic teleconference on February 28, after which there will be an item under item 7B on your next agendas, so the next two agendas in March, where they can make public comments. And then at your first reading, as well in April, we'll also put that under item 7B so that people can still make comments at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Been a motion by Councilmember Riley, second by Mayor Pro Tim Boni. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Item E.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the Deputy Assistant City Manager Financial Services Department Director and Assistant Director of Financial Services Department to negotiate and execute any and all contracts and other documents incident to establishing bank and investment accounts for the purpose of the investment of City of Missouri City funds and providing for repeal.
Elena.
But we have recently had to change an investment officer. So we had to inform all of the banks and financial institutions that we do business with, um, to remove names. And, um, in order to do that, some of the institutions are requiring, uh, separate resolutions. This item would provide for a master resolution where we're able to provide them this resolution and, uh, those identified individuals will be able to sign the documents, uh, to be able to, uh, change some of the names that are on the, um, investment instrument documents.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been a motion by Councilmember Clausar, second by Councilmember Riley. Is there a discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion, please say no. Motion carries, seven zero. Item eleven F. have been pulled. Item number twelve are city council announcements. Uh, well, we'll start with, um, Councilmember Riley.
Are we skipping over item eleven F.?
No, I said it's been pulled.
Oh, okay. Okay, so I had a very busy two weeks. So I had an opportunity to attend the mayor's youth council, uh, which was really exciting, uh, to meet a lot of the young people that are in our community across the, uh, Fort Ben I S D area, uh, learning about their future opportunities for engagement and leadership. So, uh, thank you so much, Mayor, for extending that invitation. I really enjoyed that. We also, uh, I was able to accompany Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Marulis to the Proclamation for Destiny Church right there and, um, right there on Highway six where the old, I'm telling my age, the old pallet rolls was. Uh, they're right over there. Wonderful service, great worship, wonderful people. So, uh, thank you so much to Pastor Scott Nichols for inviting council to take part in that. Also attended the Vicksburg's H O A. meeting. Uh, listened to some of their concerns, uh, that I believe Sasha is working on and, uh, counsel. The, I went, of course, facilitate the neighborhood community meeting, um, here about the gas station. We had a packed house. Um, it was definitely good to see, uh, residents come out and voice their concerns and their issues in regards to this particular, uh, development. And might I say, uh, it is a huge concern that some of these land plots are still zoned for certain properties and certain, um, high-level commercials that we as council definitely need to pay attention to and take action on going forward to make sure that communities are not being impacted in a negative way, um, and affecting their quality of life. Definitely want to, uh, say congratulations to our new city secretary, uh, Crystal Roan. Uh, we stole her from Pearland, so that was wonderful. And, uh, we're looking forward to working with her. I also attended the, uh, P D I. meeting virtually. I just want to say thank you so much to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Boni and Councilmember Marulis for assisting me and definitely, um, Sasha for helping me get through, work through those I T. Because I'm not tech savvy. I'm social media savvy, but not I T. savvy. So thank y'all for y'all patience, helped me get, work through that. Uh, attended the H, uh, the H O A. meeting for Hunter's Glen Four virtually and listened to the repetition here. Hunter's Glen Four H O A. virtual meeting, jumped off of there. Attended the H O A. Hunter's Point Estates meeting virtually to join back to the Hunter's Glen Four H O A. virtually meeting. Um, and then to get phone calls after both of those meetings from both of those communities. I definitely want to say thank you to, uh, Mrs. Sonia Brown Marshall, who is our Chair for Planning and Zoning, um, who assisted me in navigating through this process. And want to say thank you to Jennifer Gomez, um, who helped to facilitate that meeting in regards to that. And, um, Aubrey Taylor, I keep saying Taylor. Are you going to change your name, Aubrey? Aubrey Nettles, uh, for being, uh, so cooperative to help us navigate through that complicated process. Um, had an opportunity to kind of let my hair down with the rest of, uh, Mayor and Councilmember, uh, Clausar when we, we attended the Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce fiftieth anniversary gala at Safari. And I didn't see Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Boni, you know, cut a rug, but, uh, maybe at the next one, he will. And of course, the Tiger Lunar New Year's, uh, Festival at Tang City. Um, I believe council had already been there. I kind of came in and closed things out, the party at the end. So that was really nice meeting everybody. The Fun Meadows H O A. Board Meeting, I attended. Um, I have some issues that I'll be addressing with, um, City Manager Jackson On that they're concerned about. Hunter's Glen one and two, H O A. meeting, the Emerge Conference that I was so proud to see Missouri City well represented there. Um, Martin Russell there, H R., Elena. It was great to see you as well. Some of our, uh, Missouri City Police Officers, Officer Robin Williams. I got a chance to meet her and, uh, Lieutenant Hurt and, um, Jeremy. So, and everybody else, Brian. Just thank y'all so much for representing Missouri City so well at the Emerge Conference. And then, of course, close it out with the Black History Month kickoff celebration. What a joy it was to see those come out and celebrate and the new proclamation that we have, uh, and that new design. So thank you, everybody, for entertaining my very long announcement list. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you. How do I follow up after that? Um, I just want to basically say that this month we are recognizing the accomplishments of African-Americans like Carmen Turner and thousands of other pioneers, um, within our community and around the world. I hope that we will be all able to reflect on how we can increase diversity and equity as far as Missouri City goes. Even though we might have had a lot of accomplishments so far over the last hundred years or so by African-Americans, there is still a lot of work to be done. So if you're ever in a position where wrong is being implemented, I will hope that you will have integrity and speak up. This is something that I've done, um, my entire life as being a Native American, I'm sorry, a native Missouri City resident, born and raised in the Texas Parkway Corridor. I'm so proud to be, uh, product of my parents who are still pillars of the community and continue to service, um, the residents on a day-to-day basis. I'm partnering up with residents and business owners this Black History Month to help improve the corridor and take new ideas on how we can continue to move, um, this Texas Parkway Corridor forward. As a Black leader and professional, we have a chance to change the world over the years. And I'm grateful to have this opportunity and this platform to continue to serve and continue to move this city forward. Also, I would like to thank Jennifer Thomas Gomez for her, um, due diligence in navigating that very rough crowd. I know it was a lot of motions going on, um, but you weathered the storm. You had a very good professionalism and you were very knowledgeable of the topic. So I thank you for that. Um, I look forward to us correcting our zoning issues so we can be proactive in making sure that we, um, address these issues before they are hit on. Um, last but not least, I will be hosting a first annual twenty-two thirty-four Black History Month Poetry Contest. This poetry contest will be directed to the Marshall students, um, the ninth grade through twelfth grades. Um, they will have a topic. Submissions will be entered virtually and they will be judged by a panel with a first-place cash prize. So, um, the flyer will go out tomorrow on my personal social media platforms. I will see if I can share it with, um, our outlets on social media regarding Missouri City and just try to help bring some positivity and new ideas and highlight the youth that we have that are so talented. So that concludes my announcements and, uh, good evening. Have a good evening. Drive home safely.
Councilmember Marulis.
Those were two very good summaries. Uh, thank you, ladies, for covering that and thank you for your service. So we had a great kickoff to the points earlier about Black History Month. I asked the public to come and visit the art that's in the art gallery. Some really great art, local art, and, um, I think you guys will find it very worthy. Saturday, we also spent at Tang City with Chinese New Year. And one thing I mentioned yesterday, or Saturday, what a great city we live in. One day, we're celebrating Chinese New Year. The next day, we're celebrating Black History Month. And it really is awesome to be able to celebrate the diversity in our city. Destiny Church was also a great, uh, a great service. Uh, I saw Councilmember Riley actually really get into that service. Uh, the message was making room, which, uh, really, really had me rethink some things. And lastly, I want to pay our respects to a former councilmember, Buddy Jemerson, who passed. He served our city, um, gracefully. And, uh, he's with the Lord and, uh, may his memory be eternal.
Thank you. Councilmember Clausar.
Thank you, Mayor. Last, uh, Thursday, um, I want to congratulate Aubrey Nettles, her team, and our Small Business Advisory Committee for hosting the city's very first, uh, business networking event for Missouri City businesses. Uh, it was an event that was long overdue and, um, each business got a chance to go around and state the name of their business and really connect, uh, resources. So, I mean, we have so much to offer right here with our Missouri City businesses. And so we look forward to the next one, next quarter, right? Yes, so thank you, Aubrey and your team. We will be having a Small Business Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow. So please stay tuned for that. As Councilmember Riley stated, um, myself, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Mayor, we attended the, uh, Fort Ben Chambers, uh, Chairman's Gala. Um, I actually went to school with the chairman and it was an honor to see him, uh, celebrate fifty years with the chamber. And it was an honor to be there with my parents and my daughter. Next, I was, um, honored to receive an award on Saturday from the American Caribbean Chamber as a mover and shaker alongside of several, um, uh, community leaders. And it was just, it was a pleasure and honor to be, uh, honored for my community service there. I also snuck in on Saturday to the annual Dad Daughter Dance. I was in the area and so I just wanted to take a glimpse. I always hear about the wonderful things that happened with, uh, Jason and his team, Jason and Danielle, and, um, and, and how all the little girls and the dads dance around. And it was just really, really a cute event. So I popped in and I popped out because I didn't want to get kicked out. But, um, it was really good. So thank you to you and your team for continuing to host that each year. I also attended with my colleagues, uh, the Black History Month kickoff. I want to thank Edison Arts Foundation for, um, really taking the lead on that and hosting that, and then all of the artists that were, uh, in attendance. I want to, I know we are so used to Black History Month honoring our, our greats, but I want us to remember that we have a lot of greats right here in Missouri City to always remember our local greats. And, um, I also attended the community meeting for the gas station. It was really good to see our residents, um, come together and, um, voice, voice their opinion. And so it was really good to, uh, hear that and, um, just to be in the presence of, 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 um, residents that care about their communities. And then lastly, today, I attended my very first, uh, financial services meeting. So I want to thank, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Boni, um, and also, uh, Councilmember Marulis and the team, Elena, and your, your financial team for welcoming me, welcoming me to, um, the, uh, committee. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Emory.
Yes, I'd also, uh, like to echo the, uh, comments that, uh, Anthony Marulis, Councilman Marulis, made as far as the loss of one of our, uh, city council members that, that served on the city council for a number of years. Buddy Jemerson, uh, he was a mainstay and, uh, he was well-known. And he brought a lot of, uh, uh, of not only talent, but class to, uh, to the city council. Also, uh, I, uh, was at the, uh, Black History Month kickoff, uh, and it was great. It was even better because we moved it inside and didn't have to worry about the freezing weather. But we had a good turnout and, uh, it was, uh, uh, exciting to see, uh, that, uh, Missouri City again is, uh, showing that, uh, we're one of the most diverse cities in not only the, the, the county, but also the state. So, uh, looking forward to additional activities, uh, that, uh, we'll be, uh, celebrating. I attended the, uh, Oakwick Forest H O A. And like most H O As, they're looking for some repairs of their streets. So, uh, fortunately, um, I had, uh, some, uh, support with Sasha. So we were able to, uh, and, and listen and, and hear what their, uh, their requests were and their, and their comments. So that was, uh, always, uh, something that's to hear from the, the, the citizens. Fine, uh, second, I would also like to, uh, give kudos to Chief Barrison and City Manager, uh, Jackson and anyone else who was involved in, uh, putting together the, uh, the package for, uh, two new additional, uh, police officers and, uh, their, um, motorcycle, uh, equipment. It's, I think it's a great addition to, uh, uh, the, uh, P D. staff. And, uh, I think we're going to be able to, uh, uh, you know, place those assets where they're really needed and will have a great impact. So with that, I, you know, I thank, uh, the, the efforts to bring, uh, that request forward. And, uh, finally, I had, uh, the opportunity to attend, uh, Quail Valley Proud Board Meeting. Quail Valley Proud is a, uh, community organization within Quail Valley. They, uh, coordinate a lot of activities with, uh, a number of the different community, uh, organizations in, uh, Missouri City and Quail Valley. The Parks Department was there because they, uh, uh, give assistance in some of the events that we have. We had a great turnout, uh, able to, uh, bring, uh, to the, uh, the, uh, the group that was there, some of the, uh, exciting, uh, developments that are going on, on, uh, Town Center, two and three, and, uh, the, uh, uh, Demo Park. We, uh, talked a little bit about that also. And of course, the, the Freedom Tree, which was, uh, really, uh, something that was of real, uh, uh, interest, uh, to, uh, many of the, uh, participants that were, uh, that had attended. So with that, Mayor, that's my, um,
Thank you.
Message.
Mayor Pro Tim Boni.
Well, first, I want to thank Councilmember Riley for coming all the way out to District B. to Vicksburg to visit our residents. And, uh, I would love to hear what some of those concerns were when you attended that meeting. I couldn't make it that night. Uh, I want to thank the Fort Ben Patriots Little League Team for surprising and honoring myself and my wife for our contributions to their youth organization. You know, it's not always, uh, what you do when the camera's on, but what you do behind, uh, the scenes and behind closed doors. And we were able to help them with many things, including securing a venue for their gala and, and things of that nature. So, uh, was quite surprised to receive that honor, uh, from them. Uh, I was a ten, I was an attendant at the Missouri City Baptist Church's thirtieth anniversary. And, uh, it was a, a, a well-attended event. And always, uh, a good message, uh, from, from the attendees there at that particular, uh, you know, church. So they're a staple in our community and we definitely want to celebrate, uh, uh, the pastor and his wife. I want to welcome also our new city, uh, Secretary Crystal Roan to our city. There were a lot of good candidates, but she stood out tremendously and we're excited to have her come aboard. Uh, also, like was stated earlier, attended the Fort Ben, uh, Chamber Commerce Chairman's Gala. Congrats to new Chair Kevin Riles. Uh, you know, I was there with Mayor Alakad and, uh, you know, Councilwoman Riley and Councilwoman Clausar. I think we had the liveliest table, uh, at the event and, and the after-party.
Oh, yeah.
We're not going to talk about that, you know, not, not until after. Turn off the cameras. But at any rate, uh, the Tiger Lunar New Year Festival was great as well. Widely attended. I know our mayor shared some words there, but, um, I was there with, uh, Mayor Alakad and, uh, Councilmember Marulis in District C. at the Tang City. Also, uh, was excited to attend our Houston Galveston Area Council's annual meeting. Uh, I want to congratulate the new twenty-twenty-two officers and I'm excited to continue to serve on that, uh, board. Uh, I served as a moderator, uh, as the moderator for the mayor's leadership, uh, luncheon event that took place at the Emerge Conference put on by the National Forum, um, uh, for public, Black public administrators. Uh, I was able to have some important dialogue and ask key questions about COVID and, and other key matters, uh, to Houston Mayor Sylvester Turner. to Houston Mayor Sylvester Turner, Fort, excuse me, Austin Mayor Scott Adler, Little Rock Mayor Frank Scott Jr., and Baton Rouge Mayor Sharon Weston-Broom. Great event, well-attended, and lots of good dialogue about leadership in the midst of this pandemic. Also, attended the Black History Month Kickoff Celebration with my fellow colleagues. It was a great event. And I also want to congratulate Edison Arts Foundation, Troy and Charity Carter for their leadership in helping to kick this thing off. We got some other things to go, and I'm sure Mayor Alakad will mention some of those things. Also got a chance to go by the Farmer's Market, the new and improved Farmer's Market with Mayor Alakad and Councilwoman Klausert after the Black History Event. Picked up a few items, you know, for health and not-so-healthy. Some Praline and all kinds of other stuff, but it was great. Got some collard greens. I got all kinds of stuff. But it was a great, you know, I picked up some items for Valentine's Day. I hope my wife ain't, but anyway. And then, lastly, the Confederate Drive to Prosperity Drive Event that took place on Sunday was very, very, you know, it was moving, it was emotional, and to see the excitement on the faces and hear it in the voices of the residents on that street and also their encouragement and hope that others in that area. When you have a street named after the first Grand Wizard of the Ku Klux Klan, you know, that means a lot, you know, to you. You have to not only fill out paperwork, receive mail, and also live on that street. So I'm just excited that we were able to attend that event, Mayor Alakad, myself, Councilwoman Klausert, and several other dignitaries. So congratulations again to Rhonda and Bo Gilbo for their leadership in helping take the bull by the horns and get that street name changed, and hopefully there'll be more to come. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. I echo everything that everyone said here. Just with a few updates that you probably haven't heard. Tomorrow, we will have our second coffee with leadership team right here, actually, right out here at 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. And then, on this coming Saturday, February 12th, we'll have a walk to Freedom Tree Park Saturday. It will be a Saturday event at 2:00 p.m. And we're going to start from the community park all the way to the Freedom Tree. And then, we had a great kickoff celebration right here. I want to thank Danielle and Jason Mangum for their help to kick it off. I know Danielle's been working extremely hard with Edison Foundation and Troy and Charity Carter. So I can't wait to see the rest of the programs that they have for this. We had some freezing weather here, and I want to thank the Public Works, all the other departments that chipped in. And I did see that on several of the bridges, there was sand. So they did work extremely hard to Todd Hoover, Shashi, your entire team. Thank you so much for doing that, even though it wasn't as bad as what happened last year. But that took a lot. And I want to share something that's very important to me that I want council to know about. That's something that transpired. About a week and a half ago, there's been a constituent over, I believe in District D or so, had reached out and said that her sidewalk has been, actually, not sidewalk, her curb has been broken through GFL or wherever the trash company going over. And I had reached out to Shashi's team, and they went out there. Not only they fixed that piece of the curve, but they also fixed another section that was already broken up there. And that shows the exemplary service that our team, our staff do, because all you had to do was just fix that curve, which is the one that they were asking. But you guys went and about and beyond and did it. And it's wonderful to get an email from someone and sharing pictures and kind of saying, not only they fixed what we asked for, but they fixed something else. And that's the Missouri City Proud, Missouri City Pride that we should have in each of it. And we want to thank all of the staff. I kept saying IT Department, Communications, Financial Service, Development Services, Parks, and Public Works, every single department that works hard to make the citizens, to meet the citizens' need. We thank you for all you do, especially behind the scenes, that you're not in front of the scenes, or you don't see yourself on, you know, social media often. But we hear you and we see you loud and clear. So thank you so much. With that, I end my report. Item number 13 is Executive Session. We do have an Executive Session item after this. But we're going to go ahead and adjourn this regular special meeting at 8:19 p.m. and continue back with the Executive Session. So thank you all for coming. Thank you. And Councilmember Klausert, is there a discussion?
Yes, oh, excuse me. I would like to say that although I believe Joby and Cedric are highly qualified, I would like to abstain myself from voting due to the very conflict and termination of our former Director of Communications and how I was opposing. So I just want to abstain myself so it won't be conflicting.
I'd like to say Cedric and Joby, well, Cedric, thank you so much for your years of service and your dedication in every position that you've had, and I'm looking forward to watching you lead the department, and you as well, Joby. Thank you.
E Joyce, I just had a quick question for you. Can you abstain from a vote up here at the dais, or does she have to step away from the?
No, and I was, I was actually about to make that statement to just let the council member know that technically you cannot abstain, so you would have to leave the meeting because the charter requires a voting when present.
I have a witness, people remove themselves from the dais and still be present.
So generally, what the council has, or council members have done is they move back. So they physically, they physically move away from the table, from the dais, and state that they're not present. So it's noted in the minutes that they've stepped away from the dais, and then the vote's taken, then they roll, kind of roll their chairs back.
Yes, ma'am.
And I did that recently, too. I got up and then walked back. So it was a couple of steps back.
Mayor, I just, I'd like to congratulate Cedric as well, but I also really appreciate the alignment that we're going with, right? You put a CIO over technology. So it's a nice structure, and I thank the City Manager for thinking through that.
I just want to concur all my colleagues' sentiments and just say congratulations, Cedric. I think you're a great man for the job, and we're looking forward to, again, your innovation in this department that you're going to be heading up, and the same thing for you, Joby.
Anybody else?
I just want to say, you know, at this time of our city, we need stability, we need leadership, we need consistency, and I thank the City Manager for acknowledging that talent and what we need in this city by recommending to us that Cedric Cole be appointed as the Chief Information Officer to help lead us forward. So congratulations, Cedric.
Well, Cedric, everybody else spoke. Might as well as I say something too now, right? Anyway, I enjoyed working with you in my past as a council member for District C, and I remember you coming into that position. And you've been able to take the IT to a different level, and I think kudos to you in building a strong team with your team that's literally right behind you and right aside you. I think you have shown what the IT looks like in this, in this city. I can't wait for you to take this to the next level to, you know, get us some accolades, awards. All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boni?
Wait a minute. I just want to make sure that Cedric knew that I was, you know, going to push, pass, pass some praise on him for all of the hard work that he's done. And I know that we can look forward to great things to move Missouri City forward in the IT arena. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tem Boni with the motion. Councilmember Klausert with the second. If there are no other discussions, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to the motion? So motion carries six, zero. All right, do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Joby Matthews as the new Director for IT.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's Councilmember Emery made the second. Councilmember Riley made the motion. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
I would like to say that nothing personal to Joby or Cedric, I just want to remove myself from the dais considering the termination of former Communications Director Stacy Walker in my position with that.
So I spoke earlier, so let me speak to you, Joby. Joby, you've been with us since 2001. You practically grew up in the halls of Missouri City. And so not too many people can say that they have that kind of tenure with their company. But whenever I come around, you welcomed me with open arms. You always have a smile. And you always do what you do cheerfully. I don't care how late we are here. I don't care how long you've been here. And Cedric, that speaks to your leadership. So thank you, Joby, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. Congratulations.
Joby, congratulations. Job well done. You earned it. So it's, I think, another good example of succession planning, that we've been able to move along people who are talented. So when there's an opening up above, we've had the talent to be able to move into it. So congratulations.
I'd like to just say again, personally, congratulations, Joby. Seeing as how, as Councilmember Klausert mentioned, you grew up here, and I think it speaks volumes to your loyalty and dedication to the city of Missouri City. And although being new on council, I really have greatly appreciate the work that you have assisted me with. And even before on council, you were always nice, genuine, kind to say hello when I was just an everyday resident. So thank you so much, and that does, again, as my colleague says, speaks to your volume of your leadership, Cedric, and also your training. I'd like to commend City Manager Jackson for making these selections, because I am one, I like to see people promoted within our departments and within our own confines so that people have something to look forward to in their careers, and they're not always looking outside, you know, of the box, but inside the box where the blessings truly are. So thank you so much for making those selections. That speaks volumes to what you believe in for us as Missouri City residents and council.
Anybody else?
I just, you know, I get so excited for moments like this. You know, you think about the diversity of Missouri City and the diversity here at the city of Missouri City. And to see these two gentlemen, you know, rise to these roles here in Missouri City, it makes my heart proud. And, you know, if there was never a time to be on city council to see something like this take place, it's these times that I appreciate the most. So thank you for your leadership. One of my mentors once told me, Jeff, you don't have to have a title to be effective, but if you have a title, damn it, you better be effective. And you all have been effective in your respective roles and titles. And now with these roles and titles, I know you'll do the same. So Joby, congratulations to you as well.
Councilmember Morales?
Congratulations. I spoke with him just before I sat down.
Sure. I know he wants to go home. But, you know, I will say a few words to Joby. I mean, I echo what Councilmember Klausert said about you growing up in the system. It's great to see that. I triple-echo what Councilmember Emery said about succession planning and growth. Cedric, there's kudos to you more so. And these are the true stories of what we hear. Now, I just want to see, is Michael Jordan or LeBron James better? We'll find out in time. Thank you all. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Riley, second by Councilmember Emery. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries six, zero. Thank you all. Congratulations. That time, wait, time is 9:45 p.m. We are officially adjourned.